Question procedure, Brett, we're going to ordinance 19-79, we're going to take that off the table this evening?
Yeah, that is correct. The zoning board of appeals met and granted an area variance that satisfied the development for the Zaramba group for the Dollar General store. And so they have their permit and they're moving forward with the project. So that ordinance is no longer needed, the rezoning. So remove that, there'll be a motion under motions to remove it from the table. And then there will be a motion to withdraw the legislation pursuant to rule 17 of Tiffin Code, Section 121.02.
Bridget, you got that?
Yeah, so Brett, is it two separate motions or?
It is. It's a motion to remove from the table. And then after you remove from the table, you could at that time, under motions, move to withdraw the legislation pursuant to that council rule. So yes, you're correct. There are two separate motions, two separate votes.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you repeat the council rule?
Yeah, it's Rule 17 under Tiffin codified ordinance, Section 121.02.
121.02, okay.
Correct.
We could just vote it down too, couldn't we?
You could. You know, that would be another way. There's two ways of doing it procedurally. Either way you want is fine.
How do you want to handle it, Bridget?
Um, I'm, um, trying to think what would be easiest. It might be easiest to vote it down. That's fine with me.
Okay.
So just remove off the table in motions?
No, no vote on it. Okay.
Okay.
Steve?
Brett, I assume we're going, we will remove from the table 20-25 for a third reading and vote?
I think it's already off the table.
Yes, it is, yeah.
And you will though have third reading on that ordinance and vote on it tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
Rich?
Yeah.
Procedural item. Ordinance 20-61 is the note ordinance. And that's up for third reading tonight. For the record, our bond council would like to have separate motions for the emergency and for passage. So those would be, you know, we typically will do a motion to approve, suspend a three reading rule if we're doing that, and approve the passage of whatever ordinance. And then we have three separate votes on suspension, emergency, passage. In this case, there would only be emergency and passage. But for the record, because this is for issuing debt, and sometimes there is scrutiny of these, we should have in the record, there should be a motion, second, and vote for the emergency, then also a separate motion, second, and vote for passage.
Okay.
Okay.
I got it. I think we've got everybody here now.
Ben wrote me and said he will be late to committee the whole thing.
Okay.
So he texted me a few moments ago.
Well, we have almost, how did I miss Ben? All right, let's, anything else under motions? How about any suspensions, Mayor?
Uh, yes, we are requesting suspension of ordinance 2068. That was just the legislation that came out of our last council meeting to establish the pay rates for all non-union employees. We're asking for that to be suspended and passed this evening so that we can get that reflected in rates of pay for the year.
Okay. Who signed that?
Gillig?
Have to remind him when he's able to join us.
And on that ordinance, Mr. President, if I can explain, there is a section nine that is a little different than your typical pay ordinance. And it establishes the rate of pay for the city administrator and the city engineer. That is different than the pay schedule. The pay schedule provides for what I understand you wanted was the 2% increase to all of the pay rates. But however, as you know, council members should know that the city administrator specifically requested a 5% decrease. And the city engineer requested a freeze for the remainder of the year. And so I thought it was appropriate to have those specifically mentioned in the ordinance, but then have the pay schedule stay consistent, all rates of pay, so that they will become what would be in effect the first of this next year. Say you made no further changes, the pay schedule, what you're passing tonight, would be the pay for everyone, since they only wanted their pay adjusted for this calendar year. And very honorably wanted those changes. So that's why I felt that it should be handled. And you'll see that when you read the text of the pay ordinance. Are there any questions about how I prepared that?
Councilman Jones, unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I didn't make it down to pick up my packet of information and I didn't print it out either, but this might be what we're talking on. I had a note to myself. Is this where it was the page and a half of all the wages of the city employees?
Yes, the ordinance 20-68 has attached to it the pay schedule.
Okay, and I believe at the top it had the council clerk at $10,000 an hour. Did I misread that?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought maybe you got a raise and?
No, it says per year.
Oh, I, again, I don't have it in front of me. I thought it was hourly deal. Okay, never mind then. Oh, I work on this, I still got the floor while we're on that subject again, that in front of me. But there was a city engineer, an assistant engineer, and a third engineer. Who are all these other engineers that I'm not aware of, I guess? On that pay schedule?
Those are the, some of those are positions that are not filled. This pay ordinance lists every position, as I turn to it here, it lists every position in the city. We have a lot of positions that are on here that are just not filled currently.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so that's like, yeah, I'm trying to locate. But yeah, anyway, Ken, we have a lot of positions within the city that have either never been deleted off the pay ordinance, that have never been filled for years. It's maybe something in the future we should look at doing a little cleanup of. I know in the past, we've already removed some of them. There's the list. Yeah, so currently, we don't have an engineering tech one part-time, an engineering tech one, and an engineering tech surveyor. So there's a lot of those positions we don't even have right now based off of the department, but we still update the rate of pay in the event those positions were ever be filled, et cetera. But we have no, obviously, the position we're in right now financially, we have no plans right now to fill any positions within the city unless it's an essential service position, for example, like dispatch. We had a dispatcher leave. We only have seven dispatchers in the city that do all of our dispatching for police and fire calls. So we have to replace those folks because we only have seven of them. You literally can't go without having those positions filled. So, but other than that, we're just not filling any kind of positions.
Thank you. That answers that very well, which would answer my third one. It was the clerk of courts in the engineering department. And then the director of law, looked like there was a backup to the director of law and a third backup to the director of law. Those are not filled also, I take it?
Nope, not much. He has a surprise for us this evening.
Okay, all right, that answered that. Thank you.
Councilman Boyle?
Hey Brett, so for 2065, we don't need to do anything with that, correct? We're just letting that read?
That is correct. That's going through three readings. And so either tonight or at the next meeting, council will need to schedule a special meeting for June 22 at a, I assume, 7 o'clock, but you can designate your time for the purpose of reading ordinance 20-65 and any other business that may come before council. But that's my understanding is the timetable for ordinance 20-65. It'll be read at three separate meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question about that June 15 meeting that we're going to have a public meeting. Does this mean that the public is going to be able to access Zoom and make their comments publicly?
Law Director?
Yes, that is correct. And maybe this would be a good time just to have Kathy, who is listening in, Kathy Moore, to confirm that that will be a Zoom meeting in which the public will be able to address council. I believe that I set that up with her that way, and that's part of the public notice that was included in the newspaper.
We can do that, absolutely. Would you like it the same format that we had the previous hearing, Brett, where we actually had the folks come in as attendees, have them raise their hand, and then I let them in to make public comment? Or do you want them all to come in at the same time, just like you are now?
I guess I want to make sure that they can, without too much trouble, know how to get in. If we want to let them in by raising their hand, as long as that's easy enough for them to understand how to follow that process, that is fine. The one thing is, we got to make sure is that link that you gave me for the public notice, that that will suffice. If they click on that, they will be able to attend and participate. Is that correct?
This is for the 15th, correct?
Yes.
That is set up as a webinar as we are in right now. So they will be the panelists as you are now, and then there will be attendees that can watch and listen. I can either have them raise their hand and let them in as they raise their hand, or I can let them all in at the same time during public comment time, and then after public comment time, remove them. Take them back as attendees, I should say. Whichever you would like to do.
Are you able to mute anyone so that we don't have multiple people talking at the same time? Just like President Foote would organize the meeting and allow, you know, one person to speak at a time?
I can mute them, but then they can unmute themselves.
My recommendation would be that we go the route of them raising their hand. It's very simple. We could explain a couple of different times. Throughout the process, we could take pauses and remind people how to do it. But if you don't do it that way, it's just a lot of chaos. And like Kathy said, she can mute them, but they can constantly be unmuted. And things can get out of hand. I saw, I've been watching the Tiffin City School Board meetings, and they've been doing it the same way. They've just been doing the thing where you click to raise your hand. And then one by one, they're allowed in to make their comments. And then they're done, because I would assume, because how council has always done things typically, is you speak once, it's not an active conversation where it continues to go, that person goes five or six times back and forth and back and forth. It's the public comment period. They make their public statement and comment. If a council member has questions, they always have asked that individual, but unless the council member has any specific questions for them, they sit down, the next person talks. My recommendation would be to do things the same way here. They put up their hand, council president calls them out, or Kathy Moore can say this is who's next on the list that has their hand up. I already want to do that. And then one by one, those individuals be given the right to speak up and share their opinions and views during the meeting. If not, you're going to have a lot of, if a lot of people show up, you may have a lot of just uncontrolled chaos with phones in the background, noises in the background that are almost impossible to hear anyone talking. So I think we want it organized so that everyone has the opportunity to speak who wishes to.
And Rich, we can do that if that's the way you handle it. We can do that whichever way. Either you notice who has their hand raised and call on them, or I can call on them, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the best, I like that. That's the best way to do it. If I can call on, that'd be great. I don't know if my system will work as well as yours. So we'll just have to kind of play that by ear, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, but I agree. I think that that's the most well-organized way to have a public discussion.
But to confirm Kathy, the link that you gave me a couple of weeks ago that we published in the AT twice, that will be the link that someone can click on that and then access the meeting and then participate through the process we're just describing, correct?
Correct.
Great, very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, anything else? Any other suspensions, motions? All right. I'd like to, I'd like to go to the budget then. And does anyone come up with any german ideas?
President?
Mayor?
As you'll see, you do have ordinance 2070, making some year-end budget adjustments. That's in your packets this evening. Those are some changes that we have identified that we are committed to turning back in so that it is funds that will not be spent this year. I know I went through the mayor's department budget lines and cut close to $20,000 out of my department's budget. You'll see several other changes. The city administrator has done the same. But just in an effort to try to have as best handle as we can on where we are financially with our unencumbered balance for the year, but also knowing that we have seen a drastic decrease in revenue coming into the city, we feel that any areas like this, that we can actually go ahead and reduce the budget by, will be able to give myself, our finance department, and all of you on council the best picture as far as where we are at financially at any given time. So we were able to come through and turn in about $147,000 worth of additional cuts to city council. So we're being as active as we can with any reductions. Now, there are other areas, you know, we found out all the days are blending together. Last week on, I think it was Monday night, that Chief Stevens was indeed the winner of the sheriff's race. Now, there is still time. Someone could file to run for sheriff as a write-in. But I think at this point, he's considered the sheriff-elect. And at that point, we're going to have payout or buyouts of time that he has on the books, such as vacation and sick time for him. And as long as the plan is followed through, Chuck Boyer, as you know, is becoming the chief deputy. So both of those employees will have buyouts that were not factored into the budget. So while you're seeing almost $150,000 in cuts turned in now, we will have some changes to the other side because we have to pay those figures out. And I believe, I know Chief Stevens will be resigning before the end of the year. He has already given me his letter of intent so that we're able to prepare and start the process for hiring of a new police chief. And I don't have anything in writing yet from Detective Boyer, but I am told that I can expect that also in the near future. So just so council knows, while we're excited that we're able to cut $150,000 of additional money beyond what we talked about at the previous meeting, just know that there is money that is going to have to come out of the budget as well in the future.
Councilman Shaw?
Yeah, I was just curious, Mayor. According to your timeline, or what are your thoughts here as far as starting the new search for the police chief?
Yeah, obviously, it's a civil service position, so we will be conducting a nationwide search. So far, no one has come to me and directly said that they're going to apply for the position. But of course, it was just a week ago or less that it became official that it's going to be vacant. But we are going to conduct a nationwide search and ensure that we hire the best candidate. Whether that person comes within the ranks already of the Tiffin Police Department or whether that individual is somewhere out there, living in one of the many 50 states that we have, we're going to hire the best person and the best fit for the Tiffin Police Department. Because that's what we do here at city government. We don't do anything locally. That we make sure that we have everything above board and hire the best people. It's not the kind of, well, you've done this work for the city, or you've been around. We always make sure when it comes to hiring our department heads, and anyone for that matter, that we hire the best person, the best fit possible. Just like when we hired Chief Stevens eight years ago to be our next chief. So I'm confident that we'll find someone very well, but we will conduct a nationwide search. And whatever the best candidate that rises to the top is who we will hire. We will get a timeline together and share that with council. Normally, in this situation, I would have liked to have hired the new chief several months in advance so that they could spend some time training with our current chief. I think the circumstances that we have right now, the fact that we need to save as much money as we can, knowing our revenue is down about 25% over the last two months, we're really not in a position to fill that chief's position three to four months early and then wonder, you know, have additional expenditures. So we'll keep council abreast of the situation as we move forward with the hiring. But because of the vacancy just being official less than a week ago, we do not have the plan put together for that yet.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry for the long answer.
Sorry.
Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Yes, a question about, you know, with our losses on everything, how is this affecting the street paving budget as in regards to the bridges being able to be handled in a timely manner like we had hoped before?
That's interesting, Don, because again, you look at income tax money down. We, of course, apportion, so 10 and a half percent of our income tax money, or excuse me, 10% of the income tax revenue goes into capital improvement. Which your capital improvements pay for, anything from bridges to street paving to playground equipment, et cetera. The other thing that is even being more affected is how much less Ohioans were driving during this time period. So the state of Ohio last year increased the gas tax. And that number is down significantly as well for our gas tax revenue. So right now, we have the money budgeted, allocated, and we are good for this year's street paving program, and we're good with the replacement of the Ellis Street Canal Bridge. But again, it's very possible next year that we're not able to spend as much on street paving if tax revenues do not tick up quick enough. Because regardless, that money that was, that the taxpayers voted in for the road bridge levy, that money is guaranteed. However, we will see a decrease when it comes to our gas tax and the normal income tax money that goes into capital. So this year, we probably will not see much of an effect because we actually had carryover money in capital. A decent amount of carryover, actually. That's our nice cushion that we're riding on, but that could run out very quickly as well and lead to issues next year, as far as that goes.
Mayor, the grant money that we got for the Ellis Street Bridge, that's still good though, correct?
Yes, at least as of now, we have not had any indication that that money is being clawed back by state or federal government. So at this time, we deem, or we are being told that that money is still available. So we're just continuing to keep our fingers crossed that that's not something that we get information later that's pulled from us. But all indications are that it's all systems go with that grant that we received.
That was federal funds too, wasn't it?
I believe it was. I'd have to look back into the grant application, but I believe that was a federal ask.
Good. I thought I had a heart attack when I started making those cuts. Councilman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Question for the mayor. How are the employment levels looking in our factory now? Pre-COVID-19 and current?
It's not good. So I obviously have not spoken to every manufacturer in the community, but I have talked to many of them. I don't want to name businesses specifically because I feel it's a little too private for their business. But I know some of our larger factories, the majority that I've spoken with, they are not at full strength. One of them that I talked with two weeks ago has about 450 employees, and right now, they're running about 260 to 280. And right now, the Seneca County unemployment rate is, I just wrote it down a second ago, is 21.3%. We know a good portion of that were the service sector jobs that were not permitted to start back yet, that are not factored in those totals. You know, when those numbers came out, hair salons were still closed, barber shops, restaurants, or sit-down dining, all of those types of businesses were still closed. They have been permitted to be reopened by the state of Ohio. However, we know some of them locally have chosen not to reopen yet due to the restrictions. And we still know that the factories are not operating at full strength either. So it's a concern. Next month is not going to be much better financially, or I guess now we're in June. So this month is probably not going to be a whole lot better for us because most of May, a lot of these businesses were still closed or still running on reduced staffing.
Thank you.
Councilman Jones? Unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President. That should not happen again. Are we still on suggestions of reducing the budget?
Sure.
I had several of them, and I know someone are already being looked at. But one, and I call it page 52 of the expense report, and it's under City Hall. It says cleaning services for $30,000. I'm just curious, is that something we could look at reducing, or is that necessary? Or, I'm not even sure what a cleaning service. It's 101, 123, 5413 line item, but I call it page 52 of the expense report, revenue expense report.
That is the contract for the annual cleaning of the city hall. They come in three days a week to do the floors, dust, that sort of thing.
Okay, and with the COVID-19, that's even more important today than before. Okay. Then, I had, of course, some of the big hitters, and Mayor already talked about the police overtime, the safety and training, fire rescue overtime at $400,000. Another big hitter was fire rescue operational supplies on page 62, pharmaceutical, $92,500. Again, that's probably medical stuff for the responders, $92,500?
Yes, that's all the drugs that are used when they respond to a call, all of their equipment that's used in the EMSs when they respond to EMT calls. And then that's charged out as part of the charges to Medicare or Medicaid or to the individual.
Okay, then, two pages later, on page 64, talks about street maintenance overtime. And again, Mayor said they're monitoring all the overtime. The next page was called page 65, street maintenance striping, $34,000. it page 65, street maintenance striping, $34,000. Is that something we can postpone, or?
That's our annual, the striping of the streets. If you don't strike them every year, so we strike streets every year, you know, I'm right now down at City Hall looking out the office, and we have not striped any of the downtown streets. Well, we haven't done any of them in Tiffin yet this year. And I know the line is not that visible already to begin with. So the issue you run into with a lot of that, Councilman Jones, is if we don't strike the streets, I'm not sure. I guess I've looked at the law director potential liability there. Yeah, it's a good one, because it seems like a lot, but when you look at the fact that I think, I think we have something like 89 road miles here in the city, and we're only paying like $32,000 to have them all striped, it, to me, I guess, is not the worst of expenses, but I don't know if we went two years, if you'd be able to even see the center line striping down the street. So probably get into liability issues with accidents, but I guess I'd look to Brent for the potential liabilities there.
Law Director?
Yeah, there is the potential of enforcement of, probably not as much liability, but enforcement of the traffic code, but there is the safety issue. You know, I think it's a public safety issue that we have the striping. There might be some liability, but probably in most factual situations, we would have immunity to that. So, but I think the primary issue might be public safety.
Okay, two more, and I'll get out. Page 82, near the end of that, street maintenance half-ton pickup, $34,000. Is that something we can delay?
We certainly could, Councilman Jones, but that is, that's a capital fund expenditure, which is right now the fund with the additional money in it. So that would not impact our general fund whatsoever if we were to cut that. So that would not save a single position or like the swimming pool, like we talked about closing. So it would save money in our capital improvement fund, but that fund, the last I checked, actually had additional money in it. We're just not allowed to use that capital money for anything other than big-ticket purchases. So you, you know, I know you know it, but for the public that could be watching, capital funds have to be for those big-ticket purchases. So you're buying a new police truck, or a new police car, a new fire truck, paving of streets, bridge replacements. So if we're not purchasing that, it can't go to save any jobs, or to keep the pool open, or to keep the fireworks, or anything like that, just to be clear as far as a statement for the public goes. But I do know that that pickup truck, if they don't get it this year, they're going to need it next year, because that's replacing a very, very old, beat-up, half-ton truck that we have right now, that they're kind of, you know, running it, a little bit of an exaggeration, but kind of running it on duct tape right now as it is. So could it last one more year? Probably so, but we have to look at the overall impact. And I, my own opinion would be that the cost savings, since it's not helping general fund, which is the fund that we're in deep trouble with right now, we probably are better off getting it while we have the money versus waiting till next year. And if we're in even worse shape, then we're trying to run a truck that's not able to even run. And that's one of the trucks that we use to keep the streets plowed and to haul salt and everything else. So it's just difficult if we don't replace that and the truck fails on us. So it's just one less, one less plow that we'll have out in the streets.
Okay. And the last one's very minor. It was page 83, relining the pool for $18,000, but this would be a good year to do that with the pool being down, and not, we got to do it next year. So that's not really one. Okay, that's all I had. Clear all those out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I really sincerely appreciate your effort looking through every line in the budget. So thank you so much. Really appreciate it. And yeah, I kind of agree, that pool line item that you just brought up is the same. It's another capital expense. And with it being a year that it's closed, I agree with you, it's probably the best time to take care of that maintenance. That way, we don't run over schedule and delay the opening of it next year, or future years, or anything like that. It's really the perfect time to get that kind of work done.
Okay.
Anyone else? Councilman Perry?
I just have a question. So last meeting, I know we were down 50% compared to last year, and as of now, we're down 25%. Is that correct, or?
We weren't down 50%, we were down 50% on that specific day, but, so we finished last month down about 30%, or excuse me, we finished April down 30%, May down about 25%.
Okay. And do we have any idea what we expect to get, you know, this next month? They're due, what, July 15th?
Correct, yeah. It's very difficult to say.
I mean, do we have any?
What we're going to receive, income tax-wise, because we don't know every single business who's open and what staffing levels they're open. So it's extremely difficult for us to predict right now how much additional revenue we'll receive.
Yeah, it's just hard to ultimately make cuts when you don't know at the end how much we're going to get, you know. So I guess another month will be very telling, but I guess I was just wondering if we had any best guess that we could, you know, we think we're going to be here at this time, you know, but?
Yeah, the latest information that the Ohio Municipal League and the Mayor's Association have put out is that they're telling cities to plan for 20% to 30% reduction in income tax money. And right now, we're about in the middle of that. So we're hoping we continue to improve and that we're under 20% as far as that decline goes. But that was the latest information. Now, we have another call with the Mayor's Association on Wednesday, so we'll see if there's any new information available. But the last conference call that we had, they told us that they, that we should expect for 20% to 30% reduction in revenue, and that was based off information that they were given from the, from the State Office of Budget Management. So it's tough. A smaller city like Tiffin, only having a very, very small finance department, we don't have the staff on hand like a lot of larger cities do, or even the state, that they have specific people that their only job is to constantly forecast revenues and expenditures. We just don't have the staffing here to do that, as do most cities. We're hoping for the best, but I think it is a positive to look at the fact that we've improved by about 5% roughly from where we were a month ago, as far as the loss goes. So hopefully, we continue to see a positive direction, and it continues. Luckily, if you all recall, we had a pretty, we had a very good start to 2020, as far as revenues go. We were up significantly the first few months of the year. So we also built a little bit of a cushion on that. So we've already eaten away all of the cushion that we built earlier this year, but it is helping soften the blow, so that the cuts that we're making now, hopefully, will be enough to get us through it, so we don't have to do anything else more drastically throughout the year.
Okay, cool. I just had one other thing. I saw in our packet that Councilman Jones made a donation. Wanted to thank him for that. It's pretty awesome. I was wondering if there's any kind of reasoning behind that.
Councilman Jones?
No, there is no reasoning. Well, I was following the lead of the city engineer, who said he was going to pay his own travel expenses, his own gas money, et cetera. I thought that was generous of him. City administrator said something about foregoing 2%, 5%, something like that. And I said to myself, self, why did I just kick in 10% for the heck of it? And maybe the six of you would think the same way. So that's my rationale.
Cool. I just think it's awesome. Wanted to thank him for that. So that's all I got, Mr. President.
Councilman Jones?
Yes, I can bring it up now, bring it up later, but I told the EMA Director, John Spar, we were talking about different things, and I don't fully understand this, and y'all will, but he's looking for some paperwork from the city of Tiffin for FEMA money. He said there's some FEMA money out there to be had, but someone has to request it. So somebody knows what I'm talking about.
Yes, we are still collecting all the data on expenses related to COVID-19, and we will be submitting that paperwork once it's been finalized.
And is there a deadline?
I would have to check with John.
Okay, it made it sound like it was some kind of deadline coming up. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll follow up with that.
Do, have we had any activity in the Tiffin Venture Capital Fund? You know, Mayor?
No, we've not.
Been a long time.
Yeah, it's been a long time. I think the last, I don't even, I don't remember the last, the last time we had anything.
Because I'm looking, there's, there's money, there's money sitting in that fund. We also have the money that sits in the North Star Industrial Park Fund. Is any of that used for maintenance or anything of the park, or is that money just, I know that we've used it for other things, but is that just sitting there, too, Mayor?
Yes, we do not typically use the North Star money for anything with the park. Most of the work that is done at the industrial parks anyways is done by-
That's what I meant. When I said park, I meant-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Most of the work's done at the industrial parks are, is done by the property owners or the buildings that are there. They take care of their mowing, their landscaping, et cetera. We'd have to, I'd have to get in there and read the true uses for it. Brent could probably speak to it. I don't know if we could ever use any of that money to do any street maintenance at the industrial park properties or anything like that. So we'd have to look at that. But venture capital, I know, has not been used in a long time. We can't just stick that money back in general fund, I know that, but I'm not sure if there's anything creative that we could offer, such as grants from that or anything, so.
Well, that venture capital money, though, that was different than a revolving loan fund.
I know. There are all these different funds. Brent keeps trying to talk. I'll let Brent.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just on the North Star, we might want to go back and review the language, but North Star is earmarked for economic development in our community, not necessarily just the North Star Industrial Parks. It could be used Eagle Rock Business Park and other economic development activities. So it is somewhat restricted, but it is broader than just that park. And also, the venture capital is, it's not tied to, like the revolving loan fund. So there is some flexibility, but again, it's not totally unrestricted like a general fund purpose. But we could, you know, find some creative uses right now, if we believe that it might be helpful to, you know, the community in some way. But again, we might want to go back and look at the actual language, because auditors will review any use of those funds that have any restrictions by ordinance.
Because between the two funds, we're almost, we have almost $80,000, so. Okay. Well, we're getting close to meeting time here. Does anyone else have anything? Councilman Leopard?
No, that was my pen on the table.
Okay.
Making noise.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn the, if there's no, nothing further, I'm going to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. All right, it's now 7 o'clock. I'd like to call the June 1st, 2020, Tiffin City Council Meeting to Order this evening. Councilman Jones will lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Jones?
Let us pray. Father God, we come before you as a humble and grateful people. We come asking for your wisdom, guidance, and peace as our leaders direct the affairs over our city. We ask that you guide their hands as they make decisions about people, property, and the finances of the city. Lord, continue to look over the heroes and first responders in our area. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
The public, which it stands. One nation, under American law. Justice for all. Well, good evening to all of you. I'd like to have the clerk call the roll, please.
Councilman Jones?
Present.
Councilman Leopard?
Here.
Councilman Perry?
Here.
Councilwoman Schuff?
Here.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Here.
Councilman Gillig? Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Here.
Let the, let the record show that six of the seven members of council were present. I think Councilman Gillig's on his way. Did everybody receive a copy of the minutes and have an opportunity to review those? Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions? Councilman Jones?
This is so minor, I probably shouldn't bring it up, and I don't have them in front of me, but on one of the things, it was a transposing letters, C, D, CDBG, and I think those four letters were mixed up. So that's, but I don't have it right here in front of me, but?
I'll check it.
Okay. CDBG is Community Development Block Grant.
Correct. And some of those letters were transposed on that one-line item, that's all.
Okay.
That's it.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. President?
Mayor?
I think Kathy Moore, if you can hear us, I think Ben Gillig is in the other room. I don't know if Kathy can bring him in here or not. He's under, I think, his wife's account, Erin Gillig. That's probably why he didn't show up and get into the correct-
I was just going to ask you if that would be Erin.
If you could bring Councilman Gill again, he is here, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like he was just on the, on the wrong-
Okay. Hi, Ben. Okay, let the record show that all seven members of council were present. Thank you. Anything else? Any other corrections to the minutes, additions, deletions? Without objection, the minutes will be approved as presented with the, with the minor correction. We're now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilman Gillig?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law, Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. I enjoyed reading your report from the last meeting.
Oh, did you? Thank you.
Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones?
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation of Public Property, Councilwoman Yanatuno?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilman Leopard?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilman Schuff?
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to reports of the officers. His Honor Mayor, Aaron Mottz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize. I had quite a bit this evening. First off, we have two proclamations. Trying to get the right one first. Every year, we do a proclamation for the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. And I think Ed Shutter and his group, some of them are out there watching, potentially on Facebook or on our link, and they just, because of the COVID pandemic, had gotten to us later to ask for it. So this is kind of a post-declaration, but it's still a reminder of Motorcycle Awareness Month for May 2020. States, whereas, as Mayor of the city of Tiffin, it is my privilege and responsibility to recognize those groups who have made outstanding achievements that reflect on the well-being and growth of the Tiffin community and its citizens. Whereas, the motorcycle is an energy-efficient vehicle which conserves fuel, reduces urban traffic and parking congestion, and treads lightly on the overworked road system. And whereas, the motorcycle is an important and economical mode of transportation involving such activities as community touring, recreation, and can also be an aid to agriculture. And whereas, the motorcycle promotes tourism and friendship by attracting riders from throughout the United States and many foreign countries through various clubs and organizations.
the United States and many foreign countries through various clubs and organizations. And whereas since motorcycles lack the protective armor of trucks and automobiles which increases the risk of serious accidental injury and death for all motorcyclists, all motorists need to operate with caution near motorcycles. And whereas due to the increased number of motorcycles on public roads, state highways, and throughout the nation, and because motorcycle awareness and safety is a concern to all, it is appropriate to set aside a time to alert motorists to the number of motorcyclists by alerting them as to how they can promote safely, safety. Now therefore I, Aaron Demons, Mayor of the City of Tiffin, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty as Ohio Motorcycle Awareness Month. And I encourage all government agencies, civic and service organizations, drivers and riders to join in a concerted effort to make motorcycling a safe activity in our city. During this challenging time, Ohio Motorcycle Awareness Month has been extended into the month of June. This was done under my hand this first day of June in the year of our Lord two thousand and twenty. Um, so I know Ed can't be here, um, in person obviously to accept this, uh, we'll make sure we send it to, uh, to him. Um, but it's just a reminder, there's already unfortunately been several pretty serious motorcycle accidents, uh, in Seneca County already this riding season. Um, and, and I know, uh, Councilman Perry and Councilman Schuff have their, uh, uh, what do you guys call it, your scooter gang or whatever, uh, that, that, uh, you guys ride around, you're very similar. Um, we need to just be more mindful of that, it's very easy to get in our busy days, especially with everything going on in the world, and you get your mind in a different place and you just aren't looking for that smaller vehicle moving. Um, so we need to do our part as motorists, and motorcyclists need to also do their part to help just bring awareness to this issue, uh, and make sure all of our, our Seneca County folks who are out and about, uh, riding, come home safely each night. Um, and I also thank Ed and the Abate Group, uh, for everything that they do, because every year they're putting on different fundraisers, they're helping different efforts in the community, uh, so really a fantastic group of people, uh, who every year make a difference in Tiffin and Seneca County, so thank you Ed Shutter and the Abate Group, uh, for bringing the, uh, the awareness effort to us here at City Council. And we have a second Mayor's Proclamation, uh, this is for the month of June. It states whereas the City of Tiffin supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas all people regardless of age, gender identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges have the right to be treated on the basic, uh, basics of their intrinsic values as human beings. And whereas the City of Tiffin accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic success of the City of Tiffin. And whereas while we as a success, a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Aaron Demons, Mayor of the City of Tiffin, and the members of the Tiffin City Commission hereby proclaim June twenty twenty as Pride Month in Tiffin for the second year in a row, and we encourage all residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle towards equality for members of the LGBTQ community and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. This was done under my hand the first day of June in the year of our Lord two thousand and twenty. So, two proclamations this evening, and now I've got about, uh, fourteen different topics on my card here to cover with all of you tonight, so, uh, different things that we have here. Um, first off, I want to thank Chief Stevens, Chief Velatine, uh, several of our council members, as well as County Commissioner Shane Thomas, uh, for Sunday. Uh, I know we had a protest planned in downtown Tiffin, uh, over the death of George Floyd, and I cannot commend those folks, uh, who did, uh, a fantastic job at keeping everything civil and peaceful, um, really just a good event. Uh, Tiffin did things right, and it really started from the top down, uh, with our residents, uh, that put on the protest, the leaders, uh, working with city officials, and Chief Stevens' leadership as well in the Police Department. Uh, I know myself and Chief Stevens were down there for the entire time, uh, talking to the crowd. Uh, I know, I saw City Administrator Dale Thornton doing the same, our Law Director Brent Howard, Councilman Leopard, Councilwoman Boyle, Councilman Gillig. Uh, it really was fantastic to see so many community leaders come out and just talk to the crowd. Um, the protesters want to be heard. Uh, Chief Stevens was there handing out copies of how we handle our own internal investigations, use of force, how we follow up on different calls, talking about the different types of training that we do, uh, for de-escalation. And I'll tell you, I can't thank Chief Stevens and the men and women of the Tiffin Police Department enough. Uh, it proves we have a top-notch police department here in the City of Tiffin, um, who really know, uh, what they're doing and take that oath that they swear, uh, to be serious. Um, and it's a shame that, uh, that a very small fraction of bad police officers, uh, have kind of cast them into be such a bad light, so, uh, just know that Tiffin PD and all of us down here at the administration are doing our part to ensure that this type of thing never happens in Tiffin, Ohio. Um, but just like I said, hats off to Chief Stevens. Uh, really going to miss his leadership, but I'm excited to work with him at the Seneca County Sheriff's Office, um, once he takes office next year, but just a, a fantastic leader and to thank you to the other city officials who, uh, were down there on Saturday, or on Sunday. Um, I know we talked in committee of the hall about financial matters, uh, but just to update the public on where things are at right now with the city. Um, for the first two, or for the last two months, uh, being April and May, uh, we are, we have seen a decrease of about twenty-five percent of the revenue that we should have brought in, just a hair under six hundred thousand dollars of revenue has not arrived that typically would have by this time of the year. Uh, most of that is due to, uh, so many folks on unemployment. The Seneca County unemployment rate right now stands at twenty-one point three percent at the last update. Um, that is a significant number. I have never seen a number that high here locally. Um, it's just, i- i- it's astronomical, uh, when it comes to the unemployment rate, um, for Seneca County. Uh, before all of this began, we were hovering around four percent, uh, so just a massive increase on the unemployment rate. Uh, and due to that, we've seen a decrease in our revenue of about six hundred thousand dollars, and that's because the vast majority of income that the City of Tiffin receives is income tax revenue, and when people are not working, they're not paying income taxes, which leads us to the situation that we're in, that we're being extremely mindful of the budget and we're cutting areas that we cannot. Um, I have cut about twenty thousand dollars out of the mayor's budget alone, um, several things that I have done with my department and others are doing. I know the engineer's office is that way, the city administrator, any kind of out-of-town training, seminars, um, uh, business meetings that I have to go to, I'm paying if, if it's necessary, my own hotel, my own mileage, my own meals, um, none of that is being charged back to the city by myself and most all the rest of our employees, uh, even if it's required training, because we know right now that we cannot afford to spend on any items that are not absolutely one hundred percent necessary. And, uh, so we're trying to do the best that we can to tighten our belts here to ensure that the city is still able to function. The absolute last thing that we want to do at City Hall is to lay off anyone, especially first responders, so, uh, we're going to tighten our belts now in hopes that we are able to cut enough things and get those belts tight enough, uh, so that we're not having to lay off employees so that we can continue to deliver the same level of service to our residents. Uh, additional items, um, so CDBG is coming up, uh, Councilman Jones talked about that a little bit in the committee of the whole report, um, so that is Community Development Block Grant. Uh, every other year, the City of Tiffin receives approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funds, uh, that have to be used for low to moderate income areas in the city to improve those areas. Uh, there's a wide range of functions, it can be anything from programming to rental assistance, uh, to neighborhood improvements. Um, because of the pandemic, we have not been able to meet like we would like to. Uh, the Community Development Committee has had a couple of remote meetings such as this one, and we have centered on a project that we would like to propose to council. Uh, the, the legislation is in the packet tonight because it has to be passed before the end of this month, so the application can be submitted to the state of Ohio because we have to apply for it. Uh, so we are asking that council consider improvements to be made to Nature Trails Park in the Second Ward of the City of Tiffin. Uh, they would be very similar improvements, uh, to those that were made at Riverview Park in the Third Ward, uh, last year. Uh, this would include potentially a walking trail, new playground equipment, lighting, and other improvements to that park. Uh, Nature Trails Park is important because it's one of the many stops on the city's long-range plans for our multi-use trail system throughout the city, so it helps us complete, uh, a, another leg of that trail system, uh, through that park. Um, but it also allows residents in the Second Ward in one area that is identified in the census tract as an LMI area to receive neighborhood improvements, uh, so the youth of that neighborhood have playgrounds, uh, and other items that they can use there at that park. Um, I know Kathy, if you're still here Kathy Moore, uh, Audrey Flood from our Economic Development Office, uh, is here. If you can possibly put Audrey through, she wanted to give a few additional updates, uh, under my report as far as what is going on with the CDBG application. Uh, we are asking council to, uh, read it this evening and then sus- suspend, uh, and pass at the next meeting, uh, for the ability for us to apply for this. So if council does not like that project, we're happy to hear others, but this was the only project that ticked off all of the boxes that was identified, um, ahead of time that we could apply for and had all of the available funding ready to go for the project. So, uh, with that, Audrey, if you can hear us, uh, we will, uh, let you say a few things, and then, uh, I will pause and let council, if they have any questions, ask them.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, thanks for having me, uh, Mayor, tonight. Um, yeah, the Mayor gave a great summary of exactly where we're at. I'm just here to answer any questions that you might all have, um, and provide some more information. So, um, hopefully you all remember what we're talking about here. I was able to meet with each council member one-on-one on this topic, um, quite a while ago, starting last fall. Um, and I want to thank all of you for your patience with me, as well as this is my very first year running this program, which is a very complicated program, and then in the middle of that, we got hit with the pandemic, which caused us to have to cancel the public hearings that I had scheduled for much earlier, and there were a lot of, um, adaptations that had to be made. Um, and even without that, again, this process is very complicated, and every step that I take, I find out more and more things that I have to do that I didn't know of before. So, um, again, thank you very much for your patience and for working with me on this being my first year to, to administer this, this project, and I'm, uh, grateful to have the, the responsibility to, to help you all do this. Um, and I'm, e- every step that I make, I learn how to do it better for next time, so it's a good experience. Um, yes, so we are concluding the kind of process that we've been on for prioritizing and narrowing down the project ideas. Um, you all brought, you know, different project ideas to the list, as well as, you know, different city officials and staff, um, other community members, and members of the Community Development Committee, so these ideas were all, again, kind of gone through and narrowed down based on the CDBG criteria. Um, and as the Mayor said, only one of the projects really met all of the different requirements that CDBG has, as they are very strict, um, and kind of, kind of narrow guidelines. Um, so that included, it needs to be in the right funding range, uh, so as the Mayor said, we get a hundred and fifty thousand, um, we, that you can really only use about a hundred and twenty thousand of that, um, with the other chunk of costs that have to be allocated to fair housing and other administrative, uh, tasks that go along with it. So this project already fit, um, uh, around the right funding range that we needed, um, also fit within the timing, um, you know, the plans have kind of been, uh, talked about and were, you know, detailed enough that we were able to go with it, um, for this, this process. Um, and it was also brought up as a priority by, um, several different, um, you know, city officials, uh, staff members, council members, um, and different people, you know, kind of brought it up to me without even knowing others had, had brought it up, so, um, it did, it was a good priority that was brought to me from, from the city, too. Um, so yeah, like the Mayor said, that this project is for Nature Trails Park, now that is, has been kind of identified, I, uh, will be working with, uh, Bryce Kuhn and Matt Watson to kind of specify those details of exactly what the improvements are going to look like, and we will all keep you updated on exactly what those are as we develop the project and the process. Um, and like he said, it does tie in very well to both the comprehensive plan and the, um, active, uh, active transportation plan as far as trails go. So those are some added benefits of the project. Um, so yes, we are asking you, I do need this piece of legislation to submit along with the project to, um, check all the boxes, um, just identifying, uh, that this will be the project we'll move forward with, and that we have plan, attend, uh, plan to apply for this funding, and you are giving, um, me and TSEP on behalf of you all the ability to submit the application, so just the formality. Um, and I just want to remind you all that CDBG is just one source of funding or one tool that we have to do these types of community development projects, so, um, please continue to bring me ideas for different projects that you have, um, different things that you might see in your neighborhoods or your wards that, you know, you think are issues or you think are opportunities to fund, and there are other different types of funding opportunities that we can utilize to, to make those happen, um, and I will work on, as, you know, within my position of community development for you all. So this is just one option that we have. Um, and now that I'm on board this far ahead of the next cycle, we can continue to, um, build these project ideas for the cycle two years from now for what we want to use as well, and have some really developed project ideas before then. Um, so yeah, please continue to bring your ideas to me, you can also bring your ideas to Dawn as she is your, your council representative on the Community Development Committee, um, and Mayor Demons and Dale, Dale Thornton are also, uh, involved in the committee, so, you know, bring any ideas that you have to any of us, um, for the next cycle or any other projects. Um, okay, I think that's all the information I wanted to share, so I can either take questions now or when you go through the legislation, whatever works, and so I'll hand it back over to the Mayor.
Are there any questions, uh, or comments from council members for Audrey?
Just, uh, thanks for your help, Audrey. That's an important pro-
Program and, uh, with your talent and expertise handling it, so grateful for that, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilman Schuff?
Yeah, just wanted to say, I, um, I love the project as well, it's one of our more underutilized parks down there, but it's one of our only parks that has, um, river access, and I'd like to see the area develop and be better lit, um, that neighbor could really use it down there, and I'm glad that we're moving forward with the, uh, strategic plan for the trails and tie all that stuff in together, I think it's a big win.
Councilman Jones?
Yes, I wanted to thank the committee for choosing Nature Trails Park, and I looked it up, there was eleven acres there, and there's a sh- shelter there, and other than that, eleven acres is just sitting idle, and, uh, accessed the river, so, yep, I think it's a good project, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Audrey. Audrey's, uh, had a, have a crash course in this, of course, it's her first year that, uh, she's been with TSEP, uh, to go through this, and, uh, I can speak from experience now, I'm in my ninth year as Mayor and, and, uh, thirteenth year with the city, and this is probably the most complicated grant process of any of the grants that we, uh, we apply for with the city. Uh, it's, it's pretty amazing the amount of paperwork and other things attached to it, but at the end of the day, it's still a very good program, uh, it helps our LMI neighborhoods in the city, and, uh, I'm glad to see us moving forward with it, and I think it'd be a really nice improvement to, uh, the Second Ward of Tiffin right along the river at that park that has been underutilized now for some time, so, um, hopefully with council's blessing, we can have things passed at the, uh, next meeting in June, get that paperwork off to the state government, and, uh, construct the project next summer, that's the goal.
Love it. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing slipped my mind, one individual asked me on this CDBG, is there's any matching funds from the City of Tiffin, and I went out on a limb and said there was no matching funds, this was grant money, period. Is that correct?
That is correct. Councilman Jones, uh, we are permitted to put as much matching money as we, as we would like to put in, uh, however, we are not required to put in any matching money, uh, and due to the financial situation that we are currently in, we are not anticipating, uh, putting in a dime of matching funds. This will be a hundred percent grant, uh, unless we all, this group, would decide at a later date that we wanted to, uh, put additional funding in, but none is required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, we'll continue on. I want to just update council and the public on a couple of projects. The, you probably have already noticed the, some of the railroad safety improvement corridor project is already underway at some of our crossings in the community. CSX has begun that work. However, due to the, the COVID-19 pandemic, it is behind schedule and will not be finished quite as quick as it is anticipated. The PUCO did rescind their order. Originally, the project had to be completed by the middle or end of June. They do not have to have it completed now that quickly just because of the pandemic. Construction firms are behind. Some of them are still not working. So that project will take a little longer to be completed. We are still anticipating that sometime in 2021, there should be a quiet zone established here in the city as long as it receives the federal approval. However, the project will be ahead of schedule and the, the, some of the extra work that is needed will drag into next year and will not all be completed yet this year. It really should not put us very far behind schedule as far as quiet zone approval. But some of the physical construction will take a little longer than originally anticipated. Just want to let council know in case you all receive any questions. Folks that either thought some additional work was being completed this year, some of it, like I said, is being pushed off until 2021. But we did not anticipate being able to apply for the, the quiet zone through the Federal Rail Authority anyways until 2021. So we'll keep you all abreast of that if there are any additional hiccups or slowdowns with the project. At this time, we're not anticipating any additional costs because of it. It's just the nature of what we're dealing with with the pandemic. However, good news to report, Ella Street Bridge has not been slowed down by the pandemic, at least so far. Today, as promised, it was the first day that Ella Street was closed. I myself made the mistake this morning, tried to take Ella Street and forgot even myself that we had closed that this morning. So that project, by all indications, unless we have a weather or a summer of very bad weather, should be done well in advance of Tiffin City Schools returning this fall. That is the replacement of the smaller two bridges on Ella Street over the Waterworks Canal. Then a couple of years from now, the goal in 2023 is to start the rebuild of the large bridge that is across the river. But for the public's input or for the public's sake, we were not able to do both bridges the same year because we received significant grant money for the replacement. And we had, we were beholden to the schedule for the grant, which unfortunately we could not use that grant money until the later years to the larger bridge. So we did not have the ability to do both bridges the same year or else the city would have incurred significantly higher expenses. So unfortunately, in a couple of years from now, Ella Street will be closed again for the replacement of the other bridge. But at the end of the day, we all, you all know on council why we've done it. For the public's sake who's watching it, that bridge was, or the reason we have to do this in two separate years is because it is saving significant tax dollars by doing that project in two separate years. So that is underway. I know council discussed a couple of weeks ago, committee of the whole, the sewer rates. You all should have received today in your emails, the recommendation. After speaking with our consultant, we are, the administration is supporting a 10% reduction on sewer rates for Tiffin residents. Well, all city sewer rates for the next, for the rest of this calendar year, starting in July. So our recommendation is to give residents a 10% break on their sewer bill for the remainder of this year. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, so many people being out of work or on reduced hours, we feel it's the right thing to do. Our consultant agrees with that, that it will not long-term have any two, of two significant impact on our sewer budget. So I guess we'll throw that back now to city council to see if you all support that. If so, the recommendation would be 10% reduction on sewer rates, starting in July for the rest of this year. And then we would go into next year, as you all know, in March, every March, the city sewer rates increase by 5%. That was an ordinance passed about 10 to 12 years ago. It would go up 5% again next March, but it would be 5% on top of the, the already reduced 10% rate, if that's making any sense. It's in your email. So next year, we would still have reduced sewer rates for all of next year, but it would only be a 5% reduction next year versus the 10%. That following year would go up, so we would essentially be back to an even keel. And then we would continue with the normal 5% increases of every year. So we would really be giving Tiffin residents a break on their sewer bills for almost two years overall with this period. So 10% for the remainder of this year into March of 2021. And then March of 2021, it would go up by 5%, but it would still be down 5% from where we were at present day. So we feel it's the right thing to do for our residents in these very difficult times when many people are struggling to make ends meet. So we throw that back to city council. Mr. President, I don't know if you want to hold a committee of the whole on it. If you wish to send it to a committee or if you just wish to get approval from council members tonight so that we could have that legislation for the next meeting, that would be your call as council president, how you would like to handle that.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I'd like to have a discussion about it. We, we had one previously and we were waiting for the information that the city administrator emailed us today. So the review came back. Hopefully everybody had an opportunity to look at it, understands what it says. Councilman Leopard?
Uh, thank you. That would also include our Hope Well and Clinton Township users.
Uh, yes, I believe that was a 10% sewer rate reduction for everyone, every, every user.
Good. Thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't check my emails as often as I should. And I saw I had about six or eight of them. So I did not get a chance to review that email. And we spoke at the committee of the whole about this. And I was on the opposite end of this idea. And to me, it's like the stimulus checks. People talk, do we have to pay this $1,200 back? Do we have to pay the $2,400 back? The answer is no, you don't have to pay it back. But depending on how old you are, either your children or your grandchildren are going to have to pay back that $1,200, $2,400. Here we're talking about a 10% reduction across the board for everyone. And again, I haven't seen the $80 million we have to come up with for this improvements of the wastewater free treatment. And again, we give people a 10%, a 5% reduction on their sewer rates. They're going to say, do we have to pay this back? And I'm going to say the same thing, depending on your age. No, you don't have to pay it back. But your children have to pay it back, your grandchildren have to pay it back. So I'm in disagreement with a 10% reduction across the board for everyone.
Anyone else? Councilman Schuff?
Councilman Jones, I disagree with you. I mean, the money that we have to put into the sewer fund, they'll be paying for it one way or another. Whether it's one year from now, two years from now, or gets struck out 20 years, it ends up being the same amount of money, just about. This helps people out during a tough time.
Anyone else? Councilman Leopard? Unmute yourself, Steve.
Thank you. I agree with Tyler's thought process on this item as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I wasn't that crazy about it when we were talking about it last time. But after reading the report and seeing that we'll be okay, that it's not going to hurt us. You know, because we, we knew we have a lot of money we have to come up with. And it sounds like this company feels the plan is a good plan and we're capable of doing it. And so having seen that, I'm okay with implementing it.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I have not seen the report. We were going to get a, some feedback and thank you all seen the report. What is a 10% reduction for 50,000 or I don't know, pick a number, 20,000 houses or villages and townships? What, what dollar amount are we speaking of? And please don't tell me that's not in the report because that's got a lot to do with this in my mind.
Well, we could do the math. We could do the math. I mean, we know what, you, you look in a report and it'll show you what the, what the revenue is on a year-to-year basis. So we're looking at six months, the last second half of the year. So I don't have a number in front of me right now, but you can take, divide that by 12 and 10% of that would be for six months would be what you're looking at.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the report right now.
Councilman Leopard?
I think, I think you'll find that it's between 7,500 and 8,000 homes. I don't know, I don't know what your, what the normal sewer bill would be, but I would assume in the 100 to $120 area.
Councilman Perry?
Yeah, I'm, I, along with Mr. Jones, I, I have not had a chance to even review it. It got sent out today at 3:30. Obviously I was at work. So without having even reading the study, I don't think I would feel comfortable really, you know, voting on that tonight or, you know, I'd rather look at it and review it. That way I can have more of an opinion on it, you know, for the, for the next meeting maybe.
Yeah, we are not asking for council to vote on it tonight because we don't even have legislation. So you all can't vote on it tonight. But it's something that if we're, if we're going to do it starting in July, would obviously need to be passed here soon at the next meeting. I'm trying to skim through as quickly as I can all the, the different materials that were sent out to find it. But it's probably one of those things, unless I spend time to dig in right now, trying to find the number, because there's all these different tabs on the report. You'll probably have to look at it in your own time and come prepared to the next meeting with, with some decisions. But it stands as the administration's recommendation that we do that, the breakdown that I share, the 10% rate reduction for everyone for this year. And what would amount to essentially a 5% rate reduction next year to help folks right now while, while we're facing this pandemic and so many of them are out of work.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I had a chance to review it. I know when we spoke about this last time, I was in favor of this and I remain in favor of it.
Okay.
Councilman Schuff?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, it's up to council, whatever you guys decide to do. I mean, we still have time to meet on this or talk about it, but the way the whole conversation initiated was ways to help out our small businesses. These guys have been closed down for some time. It's one of the things that we have a little bit of control over on in our city. I guess that was basically how the conversation started, was helping out the small businesses that have been forced to be shut down. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. See, people do need help.
Okay, great. We're going to have a, an extra meeting in June. So we could discuss it at the next meeting if that's the purview of the council. And then we could have an ordinance if, if you so move, we could have an ordinance for the following meeting on the 22nd. Mayor?
Okay. Um, yeah, that, that would be fine as long as we can try to get this moving if we're going to do something by the end of the month. I've always kind of believed in situations like this, when you have tough decisions to make, that there, there appears to be no clear, I guess, public opinion either way or whatever, that you always do the right thing. And to me, right now with so many people in Tiffin struggling, so many businesses struggling, you default to doing just what is the right thing. And the right thing I think in this situation to do is to give folks that 10% reduction, whether it's businesses or whether it's our homeowners here in the Tiffin community. And just try to help them out a little bit. You don't know what they could use that money for, whether it's providing another meal for their families or, or just being able to do something good for their kids who have been out of school and struggling to find things to do. So that's just what I always default to is in the time when you kind of have two decisions and you're wavering between the two of them. You try to figure out is what the right thing to do is.
Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Just to clarify, you said the, the meeting June 22nd. Do you mean we're going to have a special meeting just for that? Or did you just misspeak on the date?
No, I didn't. Well, our next meeting, regular meeting will be on the 15th. And then we will announce that we're going to have a meeting on the 22nd.
For this?
At the 15th meeting.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just, we haven't, we haven't announced yet, but we know we're going to have a meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Continue on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Another item for us, we know that the contract with the Tiffin Seneca Economic Partnership is about done. We had a six-month extension that we agreed to with TSEP. That period is just about run out. So you do have legislation this evening in front of you to extend that contract for one year. However, due to the financial situation of the city, I spoke with David Zach, who is the president and CEO of TSEP about any kind of reduction or relief that he could give us at the city in order to help us with our general fund, which we know has seen that, that nearly $600,000 decline in revenue. And we came to the agreement that TSEP would do a 20% rate reduction on their contract services for the next year at the city of Tiffin. So they'll be reducing that contract as long as council approves it by 20% of the cost that, that we have had with them for the last several years. So there was no increase or anything like that. Cost was staying the same with a 20% reduction on expenditures. I know we have David Zach listening in. So if any council member has any questions about specifics of either that contract or how he plans to still perform services, I'm sure with him there listening in, he, he or I would be happy to try to answer those. But everything in the contract is the same as it has been, except that change of the 20% reduction on the cost that we will be paying them. So I thank him for stepping up and, and helping the city in this way with the, the reduction. Any questions or comments on that topic?
Councilman Schuff?
Was the 20% reduction, is that just for one year or is that for the term of the contract?
Uh, this is a one-year contract and it's the term. So it is the term. So I guess yes to both. It's usually we've done three years, but this is a one-year deal that we'll see where the city's at financially next year around this time and, and make decisions based off of that. But right now, we're trying to renegotiate anything like this with the private sector that we have contracts with another organization that has stepped up regional planning will also be offering a discount to us. Now they're going, since we've already paid them their full contract price for this year, their contract or their, their discount will be next year, but they're going to give also a 20 to 25% reduction in our expenses. So I've been going out to all of these organizations or businesses that we work with, trying to get them to reduce any kind of costs that they have. And that's just one of the many. But I know even the city administrator's been involved with it, talking with like the copy company that we get our paper and supplies with. He's chatted with cleaning company that I know Councilman Jones had brought up. We have stopped getting certain services, like getting the windows at City Hall cleaned for now. Just things like that, that they're not essential. So cut the expenses for now until we're in a better financial position to be able to afford those. But thank you also to David Zach and the TSEP staff, staff for stepping up and taking care of this.
Is this going to affect their staffing levels? Do you know?
Uh, the conversation I had with David was not, I don't know if, if David's listening. I guess David, if you want to add anything, yes. So Kathy, could you bring David Zach, our Economic Development Director or President in?
Absolutely. Just a second, please.
Thank you. Yeah. So I'm sorry to kind of put you on the spot, David, but I know you knew we were talking about this. You probably thought that you'd be called upon anyways, but I'll let David answer that instead of trying to put words into his mouth. So
just curious.
Thank you. We just got to get him unmuted and there he is.
Hi there. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, no, it will not impact our staffing levels. We had some, I don't know for a lot, we had some- Yeah, no, it will not impact our staffing levels. We had some, I don't know for a lot, we had some cash reserves on hand and, you know, that we try to be fiscally responsible. And so we understand the, the difficulties that both the county and the city are going through. And so we're trying to be good partner because the city has been a great partner with us. So we're able to weather that storm. But I think, you know, we're also anticipating to get, and we got approval to get a PPP loan, which should cover most of that decline. You know, that cut. So we think we're, we're going to be fine. And so we should be able to provide services with full staffing at the same levels you've, you've been used to. And we're glad that the federal program exists to assist with most of that cut.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank the mayor and Mr. Zach, both the mayor for being proactive and asking for 20% reduction. So I think that was very proactive on your part. And I appreciate TSEP helping out the city of Tiffin. So appreciate both your efforts.
Anyone else? Mayor?
Okay, thank you. All right, where did I leave all that? We'll talk about more economic development even throughout this pandemic. David and his staff and us here at city hall have not stopped working on a lot of economic development projects. Two new businesses were announced this past week. Little Willow Learning Academy arrived and they will be opening business on Miami Street at the old Dance Unlimited studio. And then also the House of Beauty is opening in downtown Tiffin, a beauty salon. So two new businesses coming to our community. We're very happy for both of them and welcome in them into the Tiffin community. We want to remind council and the public that bulk trash pickup week is identified. That is taking place this year about a month later than normal. It was delayed due to the COVID-19 pandemic, but now that they're back to full staff, it will occur the week of July 20th. So that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, which are trash days here in Tiffin, that Friday will be the kind of extra day in case they get behind or miss items that they will, that Rumpkey will utilize to collect any, anything extra. So bulk trash pickup week is July 20th through 24th of this year. Same rules as normal. We will, a little closer to the date, get information out on social media and the website and local publications with the, the various rules. One of the big things to continue to keep in mind is if it's something that is fabric or upholstered such as a reclining chair, it really needs to be covered. It's for a couple of reasons. One is the same reason from every year, if it rains, that becomes almost impossible for the crew of two folks to be able to pick up and get into the trash truck. A soap recliner or sectional is nearly impossible for two people to lift if it's been soaked with rain overnight or all day. So please just wrap that. They sell very cheap plastic wrap that you can get at a lot of the hardware stores in the community, but they're asking that those items be wrapped so that we don't have the extra weight because if they can't pick it up, they will not remove it as part of the free bulk pickup. There's technically a 75-pound weight limit to it. I know in the past they've been gracious and as long as the, the crew of two is able to safely lift it and get it into the, the truck, they've still been picking things up, but they will not be able to remove extremely heavy and watered down, waterlogged pieces of furniture and upholstered items. So please go the extra mile and give them a little hand with that if you're able to. And then they also would like it wrapped just because of the fabric material potentially having, you know, cough droplets, other things like that on it. So just a little extra safety precaution. But I know that's a very popular week here in the Tiffin community. I do want to chat with council. We've had internal conversations here about DORA. And as long as council does pass the DORA legislation on the 22nd, our goal here at city hall is to begin the DORA program on July 1st of this year. That gives us just over a week to erect all of the signs that are necessary and get the materials out to the businesses within the DORA district to ensure that they have proper signage hung. And that sort of thing. So we're really asking our public works department especially, they're going to kind of be scampering a bit to get that done. But we are confident that we can have things up and running by July 1st if, if DORA is passed at city council on June the 22nd. Just a couple of more items. We've had a lot of questions about playgrounds and basketball courts here in Tiffin and when they will reopen. The, the answer to that, we certainly plan to open those as soon as the, the state order is lifted, closing them. Playgrounds are specifically mentioned as being closed by the order of the Ohio Department of Health Director Amy Acton. The last announcement came out, they're closed at least through July 1st. So once that order is lifted, we do plan to open playgrounds. It's no longer a local closure. We will open those as soon as the order is lifted. Same with basketball. The, the, the guidance that was put out with basketball was that shooting hoops was permitted, but you are not allowed to play contact basketball. So no games were permitted. The problem is in reading it, if we're going to allow for you to just stand out there and shoot the basketball, but not have sports, we also have to have a means to enforce that. And you all know, we do not have the time and the ability in sending people out to stop people who are playing basketball versus shooting hoops. So for the time being, we've elected to just leave those, the basketball hoops and nets down. Unless you all have a better idea until the, the order is rescinded for contact sports. And then you, I'm, I'm sure all of council saw the, the latest order that we'd put out. So city hall and municipal buildings are still closed through Sunday, July the 5th. That is to allow us to make final preparations for the reopening of our municipal buildings to the public. Public Works has been working feverishly installing Plexiglas barriers on a lot of the offices such as the finance department and others to provide that barrier between either members of staff who are working together or from the public. And also allow us to get additional sanitizing stations and whatnot installed here at the building. So the goal at this point is to reopen all of the municipal offices on Monday, July the 6th by appointment only for at least the first month. That is for us to, to allow us to continue to have folks separated. We don't want to have a run on the engineer's office or the zoning department or the finance office with everyone flooding in and cramming in because we've opened. So we're going to do by appointment only for the first month that we're open. If all goes well, then we will do a full-scale reopen of all municipal buildings, most likely right around the 1st of August. But this is all of course dependent on where we are with Seneca County cases. As long as we continue to do a good job, the numbers remain low and the hospital is, is nowhere near capacity. That is the plan. However, if things drastically change, we would of course have to make additional changes here at the city, but the plan is to have things open by appointment only on July 6th with a full-scale reopen of all municipal buildings by the 1st of August. So with that, Mr. President, city council is going to have to start the conversation, whether they do it this evening or a future meeting about when council is comfortable holding their meetings in public again. You all know your council room, it's not very large. Social distancing is not exactly easy. One thing that we are doing is securing masks because once the building reopens, we will be requiring anyone coming into the building, whether it's to attend a council meeting or for a scheduled meeting to wear a mask. So if that person does not have one or does not have access to a mask, we will provide them with a mask here at the city building, which could allow for greater capacity in your council meetings. But of course, we do not have an unlimited supply of those as well. So if you get a, a lot of people attending council meetings for the next several months, you may have difficulty there. So it's really up to councils. You, you could as soon as July 6th decide to start holding your meetings in public, or if you want to see how the next couple of months go, council is permitted by state law to continue to hold their meetings virtually like this until the state lifts their declaration of emergency, which we've not been any, given any indication on how long it will go on.
How's, how do members of council feel about getting back to our council chambers? Councilman Perry?
I, I'd be perfectly okay getting back to it. I just think, I, I think we, I don't know, I myself am more productive when I don't have kids and, and people screaming around upstairs, but I, I would like to get back to, to the room and, and, you know, just get back to normal a little bit, I guess.
Okay. Anyone else?
Like the second one, Mr. Perry says minus the kid part, but I want to get back to the chambers if we can.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to get back face to face with the other council members and the mayor and city administrator, finance director, et cetera, et cetera. And my thought process is being transparent. Lady called me today on the phone, emailed me and I called her back. We were talking about DORA and she said, I said, are you going to listen to the Zoom meeting tonight at 7:00? And she asked me, how does she get on Zoom? And I told her she was asking the wrong person if I would have thought about it, which I didn't at the time. It was in the newspaper as the mayor said, I could have directed her that way. So I'm thinking, even if we went back out to the, and I don't know the call letters there, the old Kroger building with much more room, that would be an option versus the council chambers. And so yeah, just be transparent, allowing the citizens who want to come to the meetings, come to meetings. So that's my input.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilwoman Yonatuno?
I wasn't ready to comment. You're calling me out.
I am.
I don't know, because I'm being really cautious and I kind of like the fact that people are being cautious and we are a little tight there. But then I hate to ask the ESC to let us go out there because they're going to have to clean it all the time and stuff. So it's kind of a burden on them. But I actually kind of like that idea because we are more spread out. So I guess if we did go to chamber again, I would hope we could spread out a little bit though, because we are, especially on my side, it's really tight over there. Not that you guys are jermy, but I, I do like a little space, you know, because it, it doesn't hurt to be cautious. But I do think it's important for the community to be able to engage though.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Yonatuno made a good point. I didn't think about the extra cleaning and it would be a burden on ESC, as she said. And let's be creative here. We have 17 parks in the city of Tiffin. I'm making up a number, I guess. Why don't we go to Nature Trails Park? Why don't we go to Hedges Boyer Park? Spread out a little bit. We may have to raise our voices. I know I'm talking a mild voice here or low voice, but I could step it up a little bit and we can be creative, go outdoors. The weather's nice.
I'll assume you all feel comfortable going back to meeting face to face.
Next meeting?
Next meeting?
Sure.
Councilman Leopard?
You go out in the public and look around, especially if you're out shopping, it seems like half of the population figures that this pandemic's over with and everything should go back to normal. And I'm not so sure that I'm real comfortable in not, not wearing a mask when I'm out in public, when I'm out shopping. Just disinfecting my hands all the time. It's, I in seeing the spike that California had this over the weekend, I, I don't know, I'm just not really comfortable yet.
Okay. Councilwoman Yonatuno?
I agree with Steve because I just had a procedure done at the hospital the other day and had to have the COVID test and it's not pleasant, not as bad as I thought seeing the pictures from it, but it's not pleasant. It's still, our numbers are still slightly going up. If we're going to do this, I would like to wait until the July, what'd you say, the 6th?
July 6th.
I'd rather wait till July 6th to get a little more time under our belts first.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with July 6th. I was thinking July after the city offices open. I wasn't thinking June at all, so.
Okay. Since I'm the oldest person here, I would, I would, I would like to wait until July 6th.
All right, Rich.
73. Councilwoman Yonatuno?
I'm amazed you're offering when you said your technology challenged. So you're doing good.
City administrator, do you have any comments to make? You're on mute. You're on mute, Dale.
I was going to correct you to tell you that you're not the oldest person here. I am.
Well, you weren't, you were hiding. Well, I was the second oldest person. Okay, so Councilman Gilling?
I haven't worn any pants that are not stretchy since March, so I'm putting, putting on the dress clothes to go back to council chambers. I might need to put in a few weeks on the treadmill. So how about July 6th?
That's right. We'll still love you.
Ah, fair. I, I might look like one of those Pillsbury cans where you like hit them on the side of the, of the counter to, to make your biscuits, you know, it just, it might be ugly. So if anybody wants to join me for Pilates tomorrow, we'll wear masks, go to the park. It'll be great.
Well, we're, we're going to have two more meetings this month. So I would, my recommendation, unless anybody objects, we can bring it up the next couple of meetings, see how things are going, but maybe shoot for tentatively for July 6th. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. In, in one of the parks, one of the 17 city parks or at city council chambers?
Well, we can discuss that too. We're anyone else? Councilman Gilling?
Um, I mean, I guess I'd be excited to get back to council chambers just to have the opportunity to dialogue with the public. That's something that I've kind of missed in the last few meetings, especially when we had such great participation with the Dollar General project and things of that nature. And I know probably DORA could probably stand to be voted on at the 6th, but it'll be done before that. So yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd like to get back to council chambers.
Anyone else? Okay. Mayor, do you have any, any more comments?
Uh, yes, just one last item. In thinking of, of everything that we've kind of experienced in the last year or so with our city family, there's one thing that kind of struck me and an idea that kind of occurred. We all know and recall last year about what was it, eight, nine months ago now, that we very unexpectedly and suddenly lost council president Mark Hayes. And every year since we created the volunteer landscape program, Mark and his wife Patty took care of the corner down by the Washington Street Bridge with, with flowers and whatnot. And I would love to see us as a city honor the late council president Hayes and all of these years of service by renaming that small little area. Something after him. I'm not very good with specific words and naming, but I was thinking something along the lines of Mark Hayes Corner or Square or something like that. Or even Mark and Patty Hayes Corner or Square. Patty has no idea that I'm proposing this tonight. So I just wanted to kind of throw that idea out there. And if we all agree, putting either some sort of a plaque or a rock or a marker out there for him, because the two of them donated a lot and a lot of hours over the years. And I just think it could be a way for us to kind of remember our late council president, who unfortunately was taken away from us way too soon.
Anyone have any comments?
Good idea.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. And that Patty Hayes, she's continuing volunteering. I saw her downtown and she once every two months is watering the hanging flowers and the self-watering flower containers downtown Tiffin. So she's continuing on. So yes, I think that's a very good idea.
Anyone else? Personally, I'm glad you brought it up, Mayor. I think that we all, we all loved and respected Mark and and I know Patty, there's a big hole in her heart. And personally, I'd like to see something in both of their names. So what do we want to do here?
Yeah, do you want to just give it to a committee and discuss the process and how we can make it happen?
Okay, I'm going to give it to the Economic Development Downtown Planning Committee. Councilman Schiff?
Thank you, Mr.
That's all I have, Mr. President, so sorry for the
Anybody have any questions for the mayor? Thank you. Clerk Council, Anne Forrest?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I worked late to get the figures for you for month of May.
Thank you.
So here's what we have. Total receipts for the month were three million, four hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. Total expenses were three million, one hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars. General fund unencumbered balance is one million, seven hundred fourteen dollars, seven hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred fifty dot fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Comparing May of 2020 to May of 2019, May of 2020 was six hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. That was down two hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars and eighteen cents. Annually, from January through the month of May, we are down six point nine six percent year to date. Keep in mind, that was because January, February, and March, we were up fourteen percent. So that has helped us withstand some of this because otherwise we would be down probably about twenty-one percent. The amount that we were able to put into Fund 215 for Public Streets from May was eighty thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy cents. And we made our bond payments that were due June 1st, and that interest was paid in the amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars. The unexpended balance for all funds is twenty-four million, eight hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, which was the same as the bank balances for the time period. And that concludes my report. Does anyone?
Does anyone have any questions for the finance director? Thank you. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would so move that we accept the finance director's report and bank reconciliation as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilman Perry?
I'll second, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second to accept the finance director's report. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Let it show that the motion passed unanimously. Director of Law, Brett T. Howard?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're now under written communications.
Yes, Finance Director's request for legislation number F-20 dash 27 to amend the 2020 budget ordinance 19 dash 84 in order to reduce expenses in the PAP state about eighteen grand in order to balance the budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation F-20 dash 27 will be held on file in the clerk's office. An ordinance has been prepared at the, for this evening's meeting, 20 dash 67.
Also have Finance Director's request for legislation number F-20 dash 28 to amend the 2020 budget ordinance 19 dash 84 in order to increase expenses in pool refunds.
Finance Director's request for legislation F-20 dash 28 will be held on file. An ordinance has been prepared, ordinance 20 dash 69 for tonight's meeting.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F-20 dash 29 for 2020 mid-year budget adjustments to cover decreases in appropriations. And there's an attached list.
Finance Director's request for legislation F-20 dash 29 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance 20 dash 70 has been prepared for this evening's meeting.
And then we have Mayor's letter of appreciation to Ken Jones for his donation of five hundred and seventy dollars to the city of Tiffin.
We'd all like to thank Ken for his generosity and for his leadership on this issue.
That concludes the written communications, Mr. President.
Thank you. We are now under motions. Are there any motions? Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to remove ordinance 19 dash 79 off the table.
We have a motion to remove ordinance 19 dash 79 off the table. Is there a second? Councilman Schiff?
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? The clerk will call the vote, please, on the motion.
Yes. Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Schiff?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Yana Tuno?
Yes.
The motion to remove ordinance 19 dash 79 from the table passes with a vote of seven to zero. Are there any other motions? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions.
There are no resolutions, Mr. President.
Thank you. We are now on to ordinances.
Ordinance number 1979 introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Tiffin to change the zoning classification of a parcel of land at 31 West Davis Street, owned by Roadrunner Reynolds LLC and a parcel of land at the rear of 235 North Sandusky Street, owned by Timothy C. Everhart and Carrie L. Simmons in the second ward of the city of Tiffin, Ohio.
This is third reading of ordinance 19 dash 79. Councilwoman Boyle?
Okay, so, um, I'm sorry, so I would like to make a motion to decline it.
Vote on it.
Withdraw it, I'm sorry.
Would to vote on it.
To vote on it, okay. Sorry, I would like to make a motion to vote on ordinance 19 dash 79.
Okay. Just to clarify, excuse me, Councilman Law Director?
When you say vote on it, you are voting on it. The the issue has to be either, or do you vote to pass it?
I'm sorry.
You know, so that you can
Motion to pass. Motion for passage. Or we have a choice, right?
Well, I, you know, you have to, I think you should have a motion to pass ordinance 19 dash 79 and then let the, the, that's just brings the issue to council. You get a second on that and people can vote it yes or no. They can all vote no, and so that means that no one is in favor of passage. But just you're asking the question to council. They need to have the specific question, should, shall this be passed? That's the appropriate motion for for the council members.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, sorry, I would like to make a motion for passage of ordinance 19 dash 79.
Okay, we have a motion for passage. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yana Tuno?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 19 dash 79. Is there any discussion? Law Director?
Yeah, just it, it is probably appropriate for the record before you vote on it that this ordinance is for the changing of zoning of property related to a proposed Dollar General store on the north side of town. There was much discussion with the public and an alternative plan to develop the property without a rezoning of this property. The the plan is, there was an area variance that allowed for the property to be developed without having to affect zoning of nearby property. And therefore, it rendered this rezoning moot was unnecessary for the development of the property.
Are there any other comments? Councilman Leopard?
I guess I guess I'm unsure on, on that statement. I was thinking we had to deny this so that they could continue forward.
Well, you can vote it down. Got the law director?
Yeah, to clarify, what this ordinance does, it asks to rezone property that is a part of and adjacent to the property at 235 North Sandusky Street, because the original plan for Dollar General was to use an, an access point for commercial property that is currently residential. And they have revised the the site plan and use of the property so that they no longer need to use what is now residential. They will just develop what is currently commercial. And so this, this rezoning is now unnecessary. So it is appropriate even for the the developers in their mind to vote this ordinance down because it is unnecessary. So it will maintain the current zoning of all properties at or near 235 North Sandusky Street.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I I thought I was clear on this, but if we vote no on this unnecessary ordinance, then Dollar General is going to require, for lack of better terms, a different ordinance, correct?
Councilman, Law Director?
No, there's no legislative action for the development of the property because what they did, Dollar General, they used the currently zoned commercial property and they have reworked their site plan to be able to use the property as zoned. The only change that they requested was a area variance, which the Zoning Board of Appeals did approve at a public meeting. And all that did was it, it shortened the, decreased the, the setbacks for the building on the backside, one corner of the property. So the the council or the development of the project does not need any council approval whatsoever.
Councilman Leopard?
Simply a no vote means they can move forward.
Yeah.
Correct. Anyone else? I'd also like to thank the council. I think, I think your involvement in this particular issue helped to produce a much better outcome than what was originally presented. So I think the neighborhood is going to be better off and people are going to be a lot happier, so. Councilman Jones?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I, for the third time, thought I had a handle on this. More everyone talks to, more confused I'm getting. I thought if we vote no on this unnecessary ordinance 1979, there was going to be a future hearing for Dollar General to come into Six's Corners area. Is that not correct?
That's, that's, as I, Law Director?
Yeah, there is no hearing, you know, there, because there is no decision by any public body, by this body or by the Zoning Board of Appeals. There already was held a Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on an area variance that was granted. Because you think of it this way, there, if if you want to develop property and you develop it, propose to do it within all the current zoning rules, you do not need any council approval for the development of the property. You just, you just comply with all the laws that apply, zoning laws for that property. The only thing that that the developer needed to do was to obtain an area variance, which is not a legislative act. It is a Zoning Board of Appeals Act, and they did obtain that so that they can build a little closer to one corner than what the current law allows. So there, they currently have all of the necessary approvals to develop the property. There are no hearings planned or are necessary.
Thinking Law Director, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Councilman Jones?
You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to vote no on ordinance 1979 thinking that there was another hearing for Dollar General to improve that site and move into Six's Corners. I talked to twenty-five people myself. Eric Cook got a petition with pick a number, 209 signatures on it. He went to Facebook, got another nineteen. About 220 people that I know of do not want Dollar General coming in there. So therefore, and I told them, I'm going to vote no against Dollar General coming in based on these 220 nos, if you will. So I'm going to vote yes on 1979 because I told them that I would vote against Dollar General coming in. So I'm voting yes on 1979.
Okay, does anyone else have any comments, questions? Law Director?
Yeah, just to clarify for Councilman Jones, a vote yes would change the zoning of residential property on Davis Street and could potentially then provide Dollar General or anyone at the property at 235 North Sandusky Street allow for them to construct an access to Davis Street. So I don't think you want that. I don't think that's what the neighbors want. And I, and I will, I will understand that at the Zoning Board of Appeals, the neighbors were there. Mrs. Huffman, who had raised objections before, and she had no objections to the area variance of what is being proposed. Mr. Cook also, I understand, did not raise any objections. They understand the, the change here, and it does provide protect, protection for their property because there won't be a rezoning. Only residential could be used for the property next to Mr. Cook's house. If you vote for this, you will potentially, if it would pass, it could lead to commercial development over what is currently residential property. Don't think you want that, Councilman Jones. And frankly, the developer no longer wants that. They withdrawn that request.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you for that clarification. I follow what you're saying, Director, Law Director. So I will be voting no on ordinance 1979.
Right, Councilman Gilling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just kind of like to commend Dollar General and the Zremba Group. I really feel like they've gone above and beyond to really work with the city council and and our residents to try to come up with a good solution. It's like you said, Mr. President, you know, the situation should be a win-win, not a win-lose. And I think they've really tried their darndest to make it a win-win.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing, seeing all the comments, we're going to call the question. We'll vote on the passage of ordinance 19 dash 79.
Councilman Jones?
No.
Councilman Leopard?
No.
Councilman Perry?
No.
Councilman Schiff?
No.
Councilwoman Boyle?
No.
Councilman Gillig?
No.
Councilwoman Yana Tuno?
No.
Ordinance 19 dash 79 is defeated by a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20 dash 25 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance zoning Ordinance number 20-25, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance zoning approximately 1.019 acres of land owned by Sabana Seika LLC and proposed for annexation from Hopewell Township as Zone R3, single-family residential district compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and the codified ordinances.
This is the 3rd reading of ordinance 20-25. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 20-25.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 20-25. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have 2 ordinances tonight, both pertaining to this plot of land. One is for zoning, one is for annexation. This happens to be the zoning. Joint Public Hearing was held with Planning Commission. They are in favor of the zoning change on this property.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk will call the vote on the passage.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Schuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-25 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 20-60, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of certain territory containing 1.019 acres, more or less, and being part of Section 24 in Hopewell Township to the city of Tiffin and declaring an emergency.
This is the 3rd reading of ordinance 20-60. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 20-60.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 20-60. Is there a second? Councilman Gillig.
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 20-60. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
This is for the annexation of the property that we just changed the zoning for.
Anyone else? Clerk will call the vote on the emergency.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Schuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 7 to 0. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Schuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-60 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 20-61, introduced by Ben Gillig. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $3,405,000, $405,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of improving progress Parkway and Fairlane between certain termini and adjacent city property by grading, draining, curbing, paving, constructing sidewalks, blocks, curb ramps, sanitary sewers, water lines, and storm sewers, and stormwater detention basins, and installing and improving catch basins, fire hydrants, manholes, street lighting, and traffic signs, signals, and signalization where necessary. In each case, together with the necessary ordinances and work incidental thereto, including certain related and required improvements to US Route 224, County Roads 1 and 54, and Township Road 18, and acquiring real estate and interest in real estate in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency.
This is the 3rd reading of ordinance 20-61. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for a council passage of ordinance 20-61.
All right, Law, we're going to, go ahead, Law Director.
Yeah, for the record, because this is a financing ordinance, we need a separate motion to vote on the passage, or on, on the emergency first, and then a separate motion on the passage. So if you could move to declare ordinance 20-61 an emergency, and then we'll vote on that, and then have, again, a separate motion, like you did, just did, vote a motion to pass ordinance 20-61.
Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would so move to declare ordinance 20-61 an emergency and ask for a vote.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilman Schuff.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pass the emergency for ordinance 20-61. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote on the emergency.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Schuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
The emergency for ordinance 20-61 passes with a vote of 7 to 0. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to now ask for passage of ordinance 20-61.
Thank you. We have a motion for passage of ordinance 20-61. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the vote on the passage of ordinance 20-61.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Schuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-61 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 20-65, introduced by Tyler Schuff. Ordinance creating designated outdoor refreshment era, area, DORA for downtown Tiffin, enacting regulations for the DORA and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-65. At this time, I would also like to announce a public hearing to be held on June 15th at 7:00 PM in our next regular Tiffin City Council meeting. The purpose of which is to discuss the DORA.
Ordinance number 20-66, introduced by Tyler Schuff. Ordinance approving the one-year extension of the contracts with the Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership for marketing, communication, and economic development services, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-66.
Ordinance number 20-67, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to decrease expenses in the TAP State Route 18 Grant Fund in order to balance the fund.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-67.
Ordinance number 20-68, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 18-75, 19-12, 19-24, 19-47, and 19-48 city pay ordinance to comply with the state of Ohio minimum wage law to establish appropriate rates of compensation for certain city employees and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-68. Councilman Gillig.
If I may ask, Law Director, does the same procedure apply to this as did the bonds vote?
No, you can do this with, as long as there's a vote, separate vote on suspension, emergency, and passage, you're fine.
Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would request that council suspend our 3 reading rule and immediately pass ordinance 20-68.
We have a motion to suspend the 3 reading rule and pass ordinance 20-68. Is there a second? Council, Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to suspend and pass ordinance 20-68. Is there any discussion? In case people didn't hear it, our committee of the whole meeting, I'd like to commend the city administrator. He asked for, he asked for a 5% reduction in pay, and he was also entitled to his 2% pay increase. He is, he is foregoing that. The city engineer is foregoing the pay increase that was approved for him as well. So we'd like to thank them for their, their, their leadership and support of, of our city government during these, these tough times, so. Does anyone else have any comments? All right, clerk called, vote on a suspension.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Schuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of 7 to 0. Now a vote on the emergency.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Schuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 7 to 0. Now a vote on the passage.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Schuff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-68 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 20-69, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to appropriate $1,805 for pool refunds.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-69.
Ordinance number 20-70, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the 2020 budget ordinance 19-84 to make 2020 mid-year budget adjustments to reduce expenses in the general fund.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-70.
Ordinance number 20-71, introduced by Don Yanatuno. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership to apply to and receive from the Ohio Development Services Agency Office of Community Development for a small city's community development block grant for qualifying projects and allowable administrative expenses, authorizing bidding and executing of contracts as needed, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-71.
Ordinance number 20-72, ordinance introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance adopting a tax budget for fiscal year 2021 attached hereto as a part hereof and directing, director of finance to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor on or below, I'm sorry, on or before July 20th, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-72. At this time, I'd also like to announce a public hearing to discuss this issue, to discuss this ordinance that will be held on July 6th at 7 o'clock at a regular city council meeting that night.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anything else for any other, any other business? Mayor.
Yes, I would like to announce also the final public hearing for the city's community development block grant program, which we talked about earlier, CDBG. That public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM via Zoom. The, the link is available on the city's website and the city's Facebook, and has also been published in the local newspaper. Again, CDBG hearing, Monday, June the 9th, 7:00 PM on Zoom. You can find that link on the city's Facebook, on the city's website, or on the local, in the local newspaper.
Is that Tuesday, June 9th, not Monday, June 9th?
It's June 9th. Did I say 2 different dates?
You said Monday, June 9th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's June 9th.
Tuesday.
I apologize. I was reading the text, so I don't know if I just put that.
Tuesday, that's Tuesday, right?
Tuesday, June 9th.
Yeah, I don't know where I got Monday from. I'm looking at her text again, and it doesn't even say Monday, so. I, don't, yeah, don't listen to me. It's Tuesday, June 9th, 7:00 PM on Zoom.
Right.
Okay. Anything else? Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, I would just like to publicly thank Mayor Montz and also Chief Stevens for their first and foremost social media posts about the death of George Floyd. I know for our African-American community, the fact that public officials made such statements meant the world, because, you know, the silence that came afterwards was, was deafening to them. I would also like to commend the mayor and the chief, and also Councilwoman Boyle. Our, and he said it earlier, you know, Dale, our oldest staff member, walked around the block looking for out-of-state plates in case anybody wanted to stir up trouble. Our law director was there. Everyone took part in the 9 minutes of silence. The mayor took a knee, even though I imagine, you know, having a recent back surgery probably wasn't overly easy for him. To that end, though, I would like to see, you know, some thoughts, and would love to hear your thoughts at a future meeting for all of our council members, is, you know, how can Tiffin be better? You guys know I'm a history teacher by trade. There's a lot of very tough questions that we, I don't believe have ever fully addressed in the United States, and, you know, how can we make Tiffin a more accepting and positive community for our friends and neighbors of color?
Thank you. Thanks, Councilman Gillig. Anyone else? Anything for the good of the order? All right, God bless you all. Declare our meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.